Yeah, sir. Independent man?
Yep.
I got the way Maggie did it.
Oh.
It's a collector's item.
So the color.
No, probably JD. Tomorrow is diversity. It was on a schedule, wasn't he put tonight for diversity, but it was.
Oh. Silently didn't read.
So they put out fifteen million dollars.
And everything else is the same?
Yes.
So I make little notes. Okay.
At least there was.
All right. You have minutes to settle.
Um, go ahead.
Yeah, five thirty-one, we're gonna have a meeting to order. The pledge, one of the chair's gonna be us.
That's which is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
Aren't you glad she doesn't ask you to sing the national anthem?
You don't mind.
Craig Scott.
Yeah.
Mark Cerberus.
President.
Ron Don.
President.
Brad Newbecker. Jenny David.
Here. Item two, we got approval of the agenda. Any additions or corrections to the agenda? I actually have one. Um, I'm gonna move to add to the agenda a resolution to accept fiscal year 2020 bus and bus facilities competitive grant as item seven H under new business and to move consideration to claims to item seven I.
It made it on the. It made it here on the agenda.
Yeah, I didn't have it on mine, but he just did it. So that's why. Can I get a support?
Support.
Thank you. Is there any other corrections or additions to the agenda?
Who beat that?
Craig to the diagnosis.
Any other corrections or additions?
Do you have that?
Can we have pardon? We have a motion of support to approve the agenda with corrections. As noted, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries item three, review of the minutes. We have the August twelfth, twenty twenty-one regular meeting minutes.
I reviewed them. I'll make the motion to accept them as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with approval from Commissioner Vaughn to approve the August twelfth, twenty twenty-one regular meeting minutes. Is there any discussion?
There is.
All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries item three B, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-one Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes.
I reviewed those minutes, the committee of the whole, like a motion that we have presented. Okay.
Motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Cerberus to approve the August nineteen.
One.
Uh, pardon?
On and Cerberus.
Oh, what do I, I'm sorry. With, with.
You just used.
Approve the Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes from August nineteen, twenty twenty-one. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries item three D, August nineteen, twenty twenty-one closed session meeting minutes. Brett handed those out.
I make motion to approve. Oh, does Brad, you gotta have time to read it?
No, we're good.
I make the motion to approve as presented. Support?
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Cerberus to approve the August nineteenth, twenty twenty-one closed session meeting minutes. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries item four, public comment on agenda item matters. This is the first of two opportunities for public comment. On December tenth, twenty twenty, the Board of Commissioners approved resolution twenty seventy-seven to adapt rules of procedure that included structure for public comment. This public comment period is limited to topics that appear on the meeting agenda. A second public comment period appears later in the agenda, at which time public statements will be accepted on any matter or issue that is relevant or germane to county government. Persons who wish to address the board are required to comply with the following. One speak only to the chair. One speaker named for the record. Two, speak only to the chairperson. Three, stand behind the podium when speaking. Four, limit comments to three minutes or fewer. And five, follow the direction of the chairperson when speaking. Board rules do not impose restrictions on subject matter. However, failure to follow the direction of the chairperson will result in not being able to talk or being removed from the meeting. The board chairperson reserves the right to sound the gavel when the audience applauds or derides a speaker. On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, we thank you in advance for your compliance with these rules. Is there any public comment in the room? Any public comment? Any public comment on the phone? Any public comment? Okay. Onto the next item. We have item five, correspondence. We received correspondence from Lake County related to the American Rescue Plan Act and the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund from Lake County related to court realignment. From Lake County related to American Rescue Plan state match programs from Mackinac County related to the support of the Delta County Resolution Regarding Management of Wolves. And from Muskegon County reported to the support for Little River Band of Ottawa Indians Casino in Muskegon County. We have received those and filed those. Those were interesting reads. Um, item six, action on consent calendar. I would like to go forward with, with handling each one of these separately.
I'll go on with that.
Item seven A, new business. We have the medical examiner annual report from Dr. Bush, Michigan Institute of Forensic Science and Medicine.
Good afternoon.
Hi, sir. Nice to meet you.
Well, actually, I was here for about ten years before as your health department medical director. But I still do public health, but at the other end.
The afterlife, right?
The other hand, you know, I, this is a little bit more of it, but people are just dying this evening.
Yeah.
You know, I just can't get past it. What I'd like to do, I come today because I think it's important that you folks all realize what you're getting and what we've found. And there's about three action items that I included in your packet that I'd like you to be able to address and get to those as we go through this. What I'll spend my time on is just kind of quickly going through my slides because I just have a few words on a few of those slides. So if you have it in front of you and you look at this, start with the second slide. We have grown very fast and we're already have expanded to the point where we need more than one place to do our job. So we started out at forty-seven oh seven McCloud Drive in Saginaw. It's just off six seventy-five. We now have a second office over Fort. The mall area. That's our administrative offices. Our clinical offices are the ones that still are on McCloud. You can see and hear the pictures of each of the buildings at the present time. We go on to three, or the third building there. That's a rendering of what our new facility is going to be in the next year, year and a half. And I tried to include in there, I think you all have it, your package, just kind of a floor plan for what it's gonna look like. It will have capacity for a hundred and twenty bodies. Which will be the largest facility in Michigan. And what the idea is for that is that we're looking at trying to not only be a hub for essentially all central Michigan. If there's a need at any given time, looking forward for problems with mass fatality incidents. Potentially working with, we already are working with, but plan to expand this as well. Several of the colleges and universities as far as training forensic science folks within our facility as well. So we're looking at not only autopsy facilities, but also cadaver and surgical technique facilities. So we can train surgeons, we can train medical residents, nurse practitioners. PAs, basically anybody that's in healthcare field that has to learn anatomy, physiology, or has an interest in any of the forensic sciences. And this facility is gonna be several thousand per feet in size. If anybody wants to know what, where it is, it's six forty Johnson Street, just off six seventy-five, right kitty corner from the Dallas Center.
So you're right downtown.
Right downtown. And it is directly across the street to the south from the bus station.
So it's right by the church, the bus station in the.
Yes, exactly. Right? And it used to be, I believe, the commission on eighteen building or, or the other one I thought it might be.
This could be a brand new, brand new building then.
It'll essentially be a brand new building. We've got the structural engineers. We've got the structural engineers in there now. The architects, like I say, have already been working on the inside. And we're trying to get the parking lot big enough to, to accommodate everything we want to be able to do. One of the things that this rendering doesn't show is that there's gonna be a good sized drive-through garage on the east side. So that we can have deliveries, deliveries, discharges that aren't out the public eye. Also looking at the possibility of when we have one of these incidents where folks manage to mash up their cars or their vehicles for a while, but instead of trying to tear it apart on a scene. We put up on a call it.
Blood.
Flatbed truck, you're right. A flatbed truck, take it inside, do all the work in there. So we're again, not out in the public. And trying to do that, especially when you get into the winter months where there's a lot of adverse weather conditions to be working outside. It'll, it'll make it a lot simpler for everybody. We've got good relationships with the crime lab there in Saginaw. We've got good relationships with several of the universities that were, we've already had arrangements with partnering with my college at Flint, Wayne State, and Detroit, Oakland University, and Rochester, Central Michigan University. And we're working on Delta and Saginaw Valley at the moment. Talks with all of those folks who actually have partnership agreements with all but the last two there already in place. The one that was first was the Oakland University Graduate School of American Forensic Science. Over there. All right. So moving forward, the next thing I wanted to talk about is a little bit about services we're currently providing there. The sixth, number six slide. And those are consistently and constantly expanding. We will have an eighteen thousand square foot laboratory that is already functional. We're continually adding more abilities to their services that they can offer. Here shortly, we're supposed to be opening their own forensic toxicology lab there as well. So now where it takes us a month turnaround time to get toxicology results are, should be within one to two days. So that way we can get our death certifications out a lot quicker and keep everybody a little bit happier on the other end there. See our mission and vision. What we're looking to do is it takes a long time to come up to meet all the standards of the National Association of Medical Examiners. They're one of the two organizations in the country that do medical examiner facility and system accreditation. We're getting there. It's gonna be a little bit yet, probably not gonna happen until we get into our new facility and practice there for a while. Something like three hundred and eleven different criteria that have to be met to become accredited. We're getting somewhere close, but it'll be, it'll still be a little while because a lot of it has to do with the facility you're using. And we think that once we're into a new facility, that it'll have a design specifically for the accreditation. So that should help as well. Moving on, I am the chief medical examiner and director of our Michigan Institute. Next slide is Brian Hardy, he's our new CEO. He's only been with us two and a half months now. And he's actually the CEO of Michigan Health Clinic. Our, our program is actually a subsidiary of the Michigan Health Clinics. And as a result, there are seven other companies that are under that same umbrella. Brian is the CEO for all of the companies and I direct our next slide there twelve is Randy Fowle, which if I can come up, give you all one of his cards. He is our, is our director of operations and emergency management. I think you saw him fairly well. So I hear. He is the person that we've designated as our primary point of contact for questions, concerns, issues that might come up along the way. And these cards have his cell phone office and fax number on them. So anything, questions you have that I either can't or don't answer for you, he should be able to get the answers for you, or I can for that matter. At some point, moving forward, we now have two forensic pathologists on staff. Our second forensic pathologist got into town last Friday. Is supposed to start actual working on September first. So that will also make autopsy work more efficient, get reports out much quicker as well. In our lab, we also have a doctoral level microbiologist that will be running that lab. You can see on the slide sixteen there, the staffing that we currently have in our office. We have nearly fifty employees now. We started, I think, when we were first up here, we had five. Like that, we're almost fifty now. Twenty-eight of those are investigators. And we have several here in this county now. See. One, two. Or five. We have seven now. We have our new ships with Ogumon County EMS, which does a lot of our seat of facility transport for us, which is nice. They help us out a lot. Clarence Bay Ridge and West Branch work with us with the short-term body storage until we can send somebody from our facility up to pick them up. And then we've been partnering with the local funeral home here for again. Some storage, but trying to facilitate moving bodies to different funeral homes. These are twenty twenty statistics on slide eighteen. Look down through those if you have any questions. One of the things you'll notice is that overall, there were fifty-nine reports. Fifty-nine of them were considered every cases. A lot of deaths occur, yeah, those fifty-nine. But if they're natural deaths, they're seeing a physician, that physician feels comfortable in signing the death certificate. No suggestion about play, abuse, neglect, exploitation, any of those issues. They're more than willing sometimes to sign the death certificates. Otherwise, I end up doing so. So those deaths are not actually included in its numbers because he had more than fifty-nine deaths that year. One of the things that we do is we manage indigents and unclaimed bodies. We take care of whether that's paying for them for disposition of the body or facilitating a funeral home to do, yes. Doing that. Up here, we haven't had any in twenty twenty. I think there may have been one this year so far, but I'm not a hundred percent sure of that yet. You look at number nineteen, those are the common medical conditions that people die from in Ogumon County. And a lot of folks have more than one of those up here. And I can tell you that most of the counties, rural counties, have the same list. You know, it's, they're all very common. A lot of them are related to lifestyle choices over time. But those are the ones that come up. Slide twenty goes through just the differentiation of what type of cases that we saw in twenty twenty. Unless it occurred before we took over last year, there were no homicides here. We did see four suicides, nine accidental deaths, and noticed that forty-six of our total deny or natural deaths. That's, that's basically natural deaths are by far the most common in any jurisdiction. So no matter which, where you go or look, the United States, so natural deaths are gonna be number one. Okay, moving on. One of the other partnerships we have is the Gift of Life, Oregon Procurement Organization. They're a federally designated organization and Michigan has what's called the Kyle Arney Law. Which if you're looking for it, is MCL fifty-two, two oh nine through two sixteen. And what that says is that where all hospitalized patients die, it must be reported to gift of life. Life does a, an assessment as to whether that person would qualify for organ or tissue donation. If they do, then gift of life contacts the legal next of kin to discuss that potential with them. That law also says now that all deaths outside of a hospital setting have to be reported as well. So if you look at the numbers for twenty twenty, therefore Ogumon County, you have eleven that were referrals combined between the hospital and, and the AME office. And let's see, out of those eleven, two were considered donors or, or ability to donate. But those two donations helped a hundred and fifty different people. So that's amazing really that they can get up to seventy-five different parts of a person's body for transplant. If we look at twenty twenty-one, notice the huge jump in the number of recalls. And that's that because we're reporting everybody now. The last year, we weren't here the whole year, so our investigators weren't weren't doing the reporting at that time. We weren't doing, we weren't here to do the reporting at that time. So we expect that over time, that number's gonna grow even better or farther. Of course, out of the twenty-seventy, still only had two that were eligible for donation. What we found up here often is that a lot of the folks are older. A lot of the folks have more of the chronic conditions that deteriorate their organs and tissues. And so a lot more of them are unable to donate because of that. And then one of the last things with the slides is that Dr. Caston was extremely helpful and supportive of us when I first started. He's since retired from our place. Yeah, I don't know what all he's doing at the moment, but we were just happy to have him for the time he was with us. So that takes care of that part. Do you have any questions so far?
Glad. So in the clerk's office, we get calls regularly asking for your contact information. Is this?
That's fine.
Randy, who you would like us to give?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, is, is the Mr. Fixit for all of you, any issues that come up? Okay. My standpoint as well. We've had lots of support and assistance from your sheriff's department, state police, DNR, funeral homes, and EMS up here. And I don't want to leave anybody out. Everybody's kind of really pretty supportive of what we've been trying to do. We're affiliated, not affiliated, we're, have a relationship with the crime lab for all the counties that we're covering. If there's a need for identification of someone that's deceased, we work with the crime lab to provide that service. We have to legally, we have to make sure before we release a dead body that we know it's for sure who it is. You know, who we think it is, is who it is. And sometimes that makes it kind of hard in the middle of the summer when people aren't found for long periods of time. We also have a relationship with Michigan State University's anthropology department, their forensic anthropology folks. Every once in a while, we find bones out in the forest and not always sure whether they're human or not. So often what we can do is have people take some very good photographs and actually just send them the photographs and they'll tell us whether they're human or not. Which is, is a nice time and effort saving service that they're providing for us. We also have a forensic dentist on staff in the process of doing positive IDs. The three things that we look for are facial recognition, dental records, or dental identification, prosthetic identifications. For instance, one of our cases was a fire victim that happened to have a denture. Had his aim. We didn't figure that most times people were wearing other people's dentures. So it's likely was that person. But we, despite that, we still had to try and get even more positive because some people use other people's toothbrushes too. You know, who knows? So we ended up having to do DNA on that one. The DNA with the R. It is the most expensive one to do identifications with, but we do send those out when we need to. All right. So besides, one of the first action items is that I need to have you folks address is acceptance of this one. It's all over. But the second one is appointing two of our forensic pathologists also as deputy medical examiners. That would fulfill our promise of succession planning. I'm a youngster, but probably won't be doing this forever. So, you know, rather than have counties have to then go out and look for somebody willing to do it. The people already be there. And so it'll just be a matter of coming to you folks for approval to change the names and keep moving.
Are those two individuals already listed?
Yeah.
Okay.
Listed where?
In your report that you just provided?
In the slides or pictures are there and everything is the rest of your packet. You have their CDs, their licenses, their files.
Okay, I, yeah, I seen that. I just didn't know those were the two individuals we were talking, okay? Okay.
Yes. The one thing I would say from a clerk's standpoint is I may have misspelled the one fellow's name. It should be R O S H A N two oh N.
Yeah.
And then the third thing, third, last thing I have for you is neither the county's attorney nor our attorneys, when we first set up the contracts, addressed cremation permit fees. You know, it wasn't part of the discussions even at that time. Since then, we've had issues. And one of the issues was related to whose responsibility or who's, or who has the authority to do that. We have a, an attorney general's opinion that. We have a, an attorney general's opinion that, of a handout that you got, your packet, that has the cost analysis for cremation permits on it at the bottom. It indicates that the county has the authority to set the cremation permit. Okay, I had to dig a long way because this is back from about nineteen eighty-nine or so. General opinion, I couldn't find anything. Since then, that's been addressed in that regard. It says that essentially the county sets the fees to recover their actual costs. The actual cost of doing cremation. If you look around the state, cremation permits in each of the counties run anywhere from nothing, zero to eighty-five dollars per permit. What that tells me is that nobody's actually looked at it as a cost analysis side of things. So we did. And on that sheet that I gave you, the actual cost would be if we were, didn't have the volume that we do in the efficiencies we do to, to get them done. Each one would be costing a hundred and nineteen bucks. Okay, our cost because of the volume and efficiencies will happen in the office now. We can do it for just a hair over half of that. So, but my proposal is this, I would send it at the sixty-three. We've had it that way in Saginaw County for years. And I don't foresee that it's going to increase near future tributes. Cost of money, same thing. You know, I don't foresee that the computer and the record log is going to change much.
So what's been the cost up to this point that, that the county's been getting charged for cremations?
Well, here, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Of course.
Nobody's, nobody's looked and they've been paying.
Okay, because we had to have received some bills since you took our contract, we accepted your contract.
Well, you shouldn't be getting many bills. Cremation.
So this is part of the contract? Am I missing?
This is like a fee for like a permit that, yeah, okay, but it's the AME's office that actually would charge that fee.
Okay, so it was something that threw us.
Well, the fee setting is yours. It'd be like any other department, like the health department comes to you with a fee schedule and has you approve them. Okay, that's what we're doing, trying to do here.
So you'll charge the customer?
We end up charging funeral homes, funeral homes incorporate that as part of the funeral charge.
What do you charge us?
Nothing. With nothing.
That was my question, that's what I was thinking.
I, I can speak from experience that I have. Fortunately had to. Get one of those, actually two of those permits. And there was a fee and I, but I can't, I don't remember what it was, to be quite honest.
Yeah.
Paid, but I, I don't remember what was charged through the funeral home, so.
If you, if you look at the funeral homes. They're required to provide people a list of their services. It's like an itemized list. And, and cremation permit would be on there if the family decides that's the way they want to do the decision.
So from us, you need a resolution to charge sixty-three dollars?
Yes.
Okay.
When do you need that? And I'm asking because in the next month, we'll be going through our budget process. And one of the resolutions is a resolution that sets all of our fees. And I can just add this to that resolution, but if you need it quicker, we can do it.
The only reason for needing it quicker is all our other counties have already passed it. And so you guys are the last ones, and what I don't want to have happen is have the funeral homes start fighting over. Well, it's the same place and you're charging us different things. You know, and so from that standpoint, the sooner the better, but. It's up to you guys is when you really want to do it. If it works better for you, that's fine.
It's just another resolution, so it'll be fine either way, so.
We'll put it on the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
That's in two weeks.
All right, no, that's fine.
Our con, our contract with, with your organization is we got two years, it was a three-year contract, correct?
Three-year contract originally, and. We have one contract that's actually for twenty years. Believe it or not. I didn't believe it originally, and we got another one for ten, and the rest of them have been for three. And in the long run, it's been, it'll be better for the ten and the twenty-year people. Because the fee only goes up, or is it? I think it's. It's either three or five percent every five years, which is a pretty good deal, actually. So I'm just thinking about when the contract comes up again.
Gotcha.
And unless you got questions, I guess that's, that's it for me.
No, I appreciate this report. I found it very interesting.
We need to make a motion to accept the report. For the actor, I presume.
But Dr. Bush?
We, we need to take, we need to approve your, your annual report to the board.
Except for your files or however you do it. And then the second thing should be probably a separate motion, which would be approving. Two physicians for, as deputy medical.
We can do that at the next meeting with the cremation cost.
Sure.
So why don't we, at this point in time, just go forward with, with accepting Dr. Bush's report?
I would make the motion that we accept the, Dr. Bush's report.
I support that. We have a motion from Commissioner Serbrook with support. To approve and accept Dr. Bush's annual report from the Michigan Institute of Forensic Science and Medicine. Can we get a real call vote on that? Ron Vaughn?
Yes.
Brad Newbaker?
Yes.
Jenny David?
Yes.
Craig Scott? Mark Serbrook?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, to approve and accept annual report.
From the Michigan Institute of Forensic Science and Medicine. Thank you, Dr. Bush.
I would make another motion that we accept the appointment of the two named, and I'm not going to try and pronounce either one of their names, but the two named. Deputy medical examiners.
We're going to put that on for next meeting with the cremation cost, because we need clarification on their names and spelling and make sure everything's correct. I thought that's what we were.
All right, I will draw my motion.
Are you okay with that?
I'm fine with it.
Okay. That's not urgent, correct, Dr. Bush?
That's correct.
Okay.
No, it, it really means anything other than just making sure the details are taken care of.
Okay, we'll just make sure spelling and everything, credentials and everything's correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Item seven, the resolution to oppose the addition of Ogama County to the rifle river outlet drain drainage district. This resolution is sponsored by the Drain Commissioner to record official opposition to the proposed. Expansion of the rifle river outlet drain drainage district. The drainage district established in nineteen seventeen currently consists of lands located solely within Erenette County. The proposed extension would substantially increase the physical size of the current drainage district. With Ogama County properties compromising roughly two-thirds of the new drainage district area. However, the rifle river watershed is a natural watershed and the residents of Ogama County have not altered the course of the waterway. Did you want to give any updates?
Nothing that's pertinent unless someone has some more questions other than what I talked to you about last week.
I'd make a motion that we adopt a resolution.
My second then.
We have a motion for Commissioner Serbrook with support from Commissioner Vaughn. Um, is there any reason to read this?
Oh.
I know there's been.
For amusement, maybe, but.
I think we're all on the same page. I just wanted to verify. Is there any discussion?
Yes. So do we have representatives with the meeting and standing briefly?
Uh, sir, there will be time for public comment.
Yes, first question that was related to.
Yeah, I, I apologize. It's for the board right now. Is there any discussion? No? Uh, can I get a real call vote? Brad Newbaker?
Yes.
Jenny David?
Yes.
Yes.
Craig Scott? Mark Serbrook? Ron Vaughn?
Yes.
Resolution approved, item seven, see, resolution to authorize a merendum of understanding for school resource officer. Is there any question, oh, sorry, that I apologize? Yeah. Item seven, see, this resolution is sponsored by the county sheriff to assign an Ogama County sheriff's deputy as a school resource officer within the West Branch rural city area. School district for the twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two school year. The school district would provide a fifty-seven thousand one hundred for this service.
Make a motion that we adopt the resolution to present. Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Serbrook with support from Commissioner Vaughn. Is there any discussion on this?
Well, I just, I have no doubt with having a resource officer, but. I just can't see how we can possibly put one in the school right now when we need twenty-four-hour road coverage. I still believe that they can cover the schools, not just one, but all of them. With a, with a deputy on the road. Hopefully by next year, we'll be up to twenty-four hours and we can regain this. That's my opinion on it.
Any other discussion?
I'm, I'm. Brad brought this up to me in discussion and, and. I didn't look at it that way, but. We're only doing this because the school is contracting with us. You know, they, they've reached out and contracted with us. We wouldn't do this if they didn't contract us. The taxpayers of the whole county have contracted through, through a vote for twenty-four-hour service and have paid the bill. So, yeah, I mean, Brad makes a good point. That, you know, we already have a customer that's paying a bill. And yet we're not providing that service, but we'll take another customer and provide a, of, of, of service for them. And like I said, if they did not, if they contacted us and pulled that money away, we wouldn't just automatically put, put somebody in there. This, it's a good point of discussion. Uh, you know, when I first came here, I mean, the, the Parks and Rec. Uh, finances was way off in the, in the, and we were tapping off the general fund and I was confronted by people here and they said. You're talking about land people off and we're going to feed deer? Uh huh, you got, you made a good point, you know? Here we got taxpayers that are paying us directly for a service and then we have. In, in sense, a contractor that's asking us for service and then willing to pay us. Who do you take care of first? And we've offered as a commissioner, we've offered to, in the, in the interim. Take reduced service of, of just a few days or something like that. So, you know, I, I, I see where the, where the school's at. But then, then again, we, we all voted to ask the. Taxpayers for, for money too. So, so just to point, you know?
Sheriff, can you give us some input?
I think our, I think our unit contracts was that, that gets done, we ratified that. I think it's going to help us tremendously on getting that night shift up and running. Because we had a couple individuals that was pretty interested. But the insurance was, was the big kicker, so I'm, I'm hoping we can get through that. Uh, what scares me about pulling back from the school is that's our children. And just having that car there alters a lot of, a lot of things, bad things that could happen. Um, we can't see into the future, but I feel. That we need to protect our children. And by, by doing that, that resource officer being in our schools may do that. That's, that's my take on it.
Well, I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I, I, I agree with you. If I want to protect, if I, if I feel like anybody needs protection in this county, I want my kids protected, all of our kids protected. What I'm hesitant or reluctant on is when we had conversation about this resource officer, you were planning on putting this. As you said, I believe three times, this very green officer, I'm not sure if this individual's an officer or what they are at this point in time into the school. That in my, from what I interpreted from what you said, was not street-ready. That I'm not comfortable with. Um, I don't disagree with what you're saying about a car, but if something does happen, which very well could in this area. If and when it does happen, it could be very, very bad. I want to know that that person that's protecting our kids is street-ready and is able to, to function, has that capability. Um, that is where I'm really on the fence with this. I want to know that you're putting somebody in there that is. Trained and can do the job if, if an event ever does occur. Hope to God it doesn't, but if it does, I want to know that you have a officer in there that is certified, that is trained, that. That will react in a situation and will know what to do, um, and how you presented it. It, how it left me was, was not that way. Um, and, and maybe I misunderstood you, maybe I misinterpreted it, but, um. From my perspective, that, that left me very uneasy when my, my son's getting ready to start school next week. Um, so, as we know, what happened last, last year with that, that child that was injured right. Um, the unfortunate accident that happened right outside the high school. I, I, anything can happen and, and I want somebody there that I know is. A hundred percent capable. So that's my take on that, but.
I guess my, my question would be if the school just contacted us and said it's outside our budget and we can't afford it. We're not going to pay for it this year. Would we, would we supply an officer anyway? If they didn't pay us? So it's a matter of money then. It's not a matter of protection, it's a matter of money. Uh, we're doing it because they're paying for it. That's why we're doing it.
Well, I, I agree with you, Craig, and I agree with Jenny.
We're not doing it in every school. We're not doing it in Whittamore Prescott schools.
Yeah, that's, that's my point is we're not doing it at every school. And, you know, there could be a kid at, uh, you know, eleven o'clock at night that doesn't have a parent around or, or does have a parent around and they're, and they're abusing them. And they'll need response as well. So, I mean, I, I think there's, I think our deputies are needed everywhere in the county. Um, and until we can get to twenty-four-hour road patrol, I just, I can't see that that's, that's the biggest priority we have. Um, I'm sure that, you know, we, we had an incident, I think, at the middle school with the bomb threat. And all of our officers did amazing job at responding to those, those threats. Um, but we didn't have anybody inside that school at the time. I'd like to have someone there, but, um, right now, we're not, we're not protecting all of our schools. And, uh, and again, there's kids at home that need to be protected too. So. That's my take on it.
The bottom line is we don't have the manpower right now. Nor does any other law enforcement agency in the state of Michigan. We're down, we're down because of, because of bodies. We aren't getting into this.
I guess that statement that you said that no other place, so does that mean no other place in the state of Michigan is providing resources to the schools?
But that I don't know. I didn't research that.
Oh, I, I'm sorry. That's what I thought you just said.
No, I'm, I'm talking to general, general patrol. You know, we gotta, we gotta make it appealing to get people here and, and I think our union contracts or negotiation. Um, I think it may do that.
So do you have an individual to, to put in the school right now to fulfill this contract?
Yes.
Is that individual MCOL certified?
Yes.
Is that individual the same individual that you were speaking of earlier?
Yes.
Is that individual, could that individual be on the street right now patrolling on their own? In a deputy car during daytime hours?
Have to go through training.
So this individual is not trained?
But this individual will be trained for a few weeks or how long it ever takes by another officer. That, that has been in there and knows the system, so. We're not just going to stick somebody there that, that doesn't have the experience. You, it, it could be something that is. An incident where we need to have to CPR, you know what I mean? It, it could be something like that. It, it doesn't really have to be a school shooting.
Agreed.
It, it could be a mentor. We need that mentor in there.
Brian, does that have to be a, does that have to be a deputy though? To do, to perform that job?
Yeah, I, I would think so because it, it has to be an MCOL certified officer because if, if there's a school shooting, we, we need, we need response.
So this individual, you're, you're thinking of putting in the schools, if, if there's a, something that happens in accident or something that, I'm thirty-three and, and state road. Is this individual going to have the ability or the, the qualifications to get in that car and to respond? to an incident that's a half hour or a half mile or a mile up the road?
I guess I would think so. If nothing else, hold it down. Hold it down and make the scene safe. Preserve evidence. That, that's, that's one oh one. You learn at the academy.
So you do have confidence that this individual is able to, to function on their own?
We're, we're going to be training for a few weeks to see, see for certain if this is going to work.
So you're not even certain. So what happened, and I'm asking because I don't know, I'm going to be straight up with you right now. I don't know what I'm going to say on this. So if this doesn't work in the next two weeks, then what, what's, what's our plan? We go forward with this contract of fifty-seven thousand, one hundred dollars and, and it doesn't work? Which is very well possible. Then what, what's, what's our plan to fulfill this contract?
If we're going to fulfill this contract, there will be an officer in there for the safety of our, our kids. And if, if, if you choose not to do it, that individual isn't going to be there. And I, I would hope that nothing would happen because I would feel very terrible about we didn't have the response that, that we could have had. So, I mean, nobody can predict the future. But we're, we're just, we're just trying to make it better. We're trying to make it better for our children. Even, even just being a mentor, walking in that high school, that first, that, that, that first office is the patrolman. It's a mentor. It, it's not a, it's not an extension from their house. If they have a problem in their house with their parents, they can, they can talk to this individual and, and it'd be a mentor, probably help them out throughout the day. Now, there's all, there's all sorts of things that happens in that school.
Can't we, can't we have an officer stop by the schools from time to time anyway?
You can't guarantee it because there's so much going on out there on the road. Just today, we had a, we had a domestic assault. It took four, four patrolmen to respond to that, to, to make sure that the scene was safe. An individual went to jail. And it would, and it, he was a, he was a potential hostile individual. Took four. So I, I can't guarantee that, 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 that response there is going to be at that school unless we have that individual there.
But you can't guarantee the response to two of the other schools in our district either.
You're talking about Whittemore Prescott?
Talking about Whittemore, Rose City or West Branch?
I'm just saying one, one patrolman for these schools over here is better than none. Bottom line. And I would love to have one over at Whittemore. Whittemore is way out there. I'd love to have one there. But it costs money to do that. We don't have the money to, the resources to do that. If they would pony up some money, I would be presenting that to you also because I think they need it too.
So why is this individual not being trained and getting street ready before you throw them into the school to, to respond to a situation on their own, at least on the street, they have backup?
Well, we, we gotta have the bodies. We don't have the bodies. And we gotta have somebody that's willing to go in there. I don't want to put somebody in there that is too young and they don't want to be there. Just if, if I assign that position to somebody that don't want to be there, they're not going to do a very good job for us. We have, we have to do a good job being a mentor. We don't want somebody just sitting in the office. We want somebody that gets into the work.
Isn't this, you said too young, isn't this individual a fresh graduate?
She wants to be there. That's the key.
She's an adult.
He made the comment about being too young.
I still, I'm just hung up on the money end of it. And, and who, who takes care of it? That's your decision.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna just turn it over to you folks. I could talk and talk and talk about it, how, how much we need it. I'm just turning it over to you folks.
I know Sheriff, Sheriff. All I'm saying is about the money. You know, if, if they didn't pay for it, we wouldn't do it. Well, the comment, the comment about Whittemore, if they ponied up some money, we'd take an officer over there. Well, that's, that's the issue I got. The taxpayers in Oglema County have ponied up the money for expanded service. They've done it. They've already paid us. The money's in the bank. And that's the service that I want to provide. You know, and, and that's your point of.
And then.
Somebody ponies up the money.
Same people have children.
I, I know, but.
And I could talk to them.
I'm just a customer. I'm just talking about a customer.
Okay.
Is, is this officer also, I mean, they're, they could be on duty on the weekends or, or holidays if they're not in school. It's forty hours. Yeah, but if they're not, if they're not in school. Like.
School's not session there.
School's not session for a week of Christmas. There's still two hours that, that, that individual has to put in, you know? It all depends on what, what's going on. I mean, you got after hours activities, you got football games, you know, we need to be there just to deter, deter anything. Right. Having a patrol car there and having an individual walking around in a uniform deter so much. And that statistic there, we'll never know. We'll never know what that deterred.
Any further discussion?
No, call for the vote.
I was going to get there. Commissioner, can I have a roll call vote please? Jenny David, yes. Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker.
No.
Item seventy, resolution to accept a proposal for inmate healthcare services. This resolution is sponsored by the County Sheriff, Michigan Department of Corrections Policy Directive zero three dot zero four dot one zero zero requires that prisoners shall be provided with a continuum of medically necessary healthcare services that are supported by evidence-based medical research. The current contract with Correctionals Healthcare Companies Incorporated to provide inmate healthcare services will expire on September thirtieth. The county administrator solicited and received proposals for inmate healthcare services. Tina M. Dumond.
Dumond.
Dumond, I apologize. Submitted the most responsive and responsible proposal for inmate healthcare services at an annual cost of a hundred nineteen thousand, five hundred and forty dollars with an option for additional nursing staff services at an annual cost of thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. I, I just, I discussed this with, with Tim, I believe, I don't know, yesterday, today. And unfortunately Greg hasn't had a, a opportunity to review this yet. That's our county attorney. And our policy that we have adopted is that our county attorney is reviewing all proposals. So I'm going to make a motion to table this, that this will be on the agenda for two weeks as soon as Greg looks it over and okay's it, and I'm anticipating there's going to be no problems. But I'm going to make a motion at this point in time to table this until next meeting.
When does the contract start?
September thirtieth. Is the, the one, the date that the previous one expires. So I'm, I'm anticipating the next day. Am I wrong there?
No.
Okay.
Is it? I may, um, just so you're aware, there are, I mean, we have contacted and I have ready to go for liability. But we just don't snap fingers as far as liability for the doctors and the nurses. So cutting it so close to the contract ending could be problematic with liability insurance.
Our next meeting is?
This will be up on the ninth. September ninth.
So that would still give you three, three weeks?
Okay.
Okay, so if you're okay with that?
I'm good. I just, I wasn't sure on the dates.
Yep. And, and again, I don't foresee there being any problems. I mean, I've discussed it, but we want to make sure that we're, we're, we had that looked over to make sure that we're, we're okay from our standpoint.
I'll support your motion.
We have a motion with support from Commissioner Serb to table item seventy, resolution, uh, resolution to accept a proposal for inmate healthcare services. Is there any further discussion?
You did what, donate to the night? The night is good. Don't actually, you're good.
Is there any further discussion?
No, that's fine.
Can I get a roll call vote please? Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serb.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Jenny David. Yes, that resolution is tabled and will be put on the next meeting. Item seven E, resolution to approve a collective bargaining agreement with United Steelworkers Local eight, five, six, nine. This resolution is sponsored by the Negotiation Committee to approve a tentative labor agreement with United Steelworkers Local eight, but eight, five, six, nine. The purpose of this, of the agreement is to maintain and improve the harmonious, you have to use big words. Harmonious relationship of the county and the thirty-seven employees of the bargaining unit through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Tim, please.
No.
Provide an update?
Yeah. Well, we're going to have the motion before the update or?
I, I requested an update, so we're all on the same page.
Okay.
Union signed off on the contract or ratified it late last week, or maybe it was Wednesday of last week. The contract does contain many of the economic changes that we had asked for. Also, I think structures their pay schedule to where it is more consistent with everybody else within the organization. The pay increases are two percent each year for three years through the twenty twenty-four exploration. And there were a number of changes that we made that were, I think, necessary to process, for instance grievances. The prior language was, was a little bit cumbersome, but also my presence here can help in terms of processing grievances before they would go to an arbitrator. We have no history of that ever happening here, but if it does, this language is absolutely needed. And I would defer to the Negotiation Committee if there's anything more that you think we should emphasize. I think, you know, we've been through with our closed sessions ad nauseam, all the changes that we had made. And there were a few of them as we projected that, that were not accepted, but by and large, we got what we needed.
I think the two of us are on that committee and I think we're, we concur with that.
Most definitely.
Make a motion?
Yeah. And I would support that motion.
Motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Serb to approve the resolution to approve a collective bargaining agreement with the United States Steelworker Local eight, five, six, nine. Is there any further discussion?
All that I'd like to say is that it was just great having Tim as the, as the.
As the talking head.
Oh, yeah.
It sounds like it went well, which is.
It was, it was very not adversary. As opposed to some negotiations that can get heated and it was, it was really very good back and forth between everybody. I think there was none of.
You had a clerk that just used the word professional, so that's refreshing.
There you go.
Yeah.
It was.
She was part of the team because she's an elected official, so.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Mark Serb.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Item seven F, resolution to authorize legal action against Teamsters Local two one four in the Michigan Conference of Teamsters Welfare Fund. This resolution is sponsored by the county administrator on or about July twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. Teamsters Local two one four instructed the Michigan Conference of Teamsters Welfare Fund to cancel health insurance coverage for Oglema County Sheriff Deputies and Command Officers. This action violates the collective bargaining agreement and the participation agreement with the MCTWF. The actions of the Teamsters Local two one four left Oglema County Sheriff Deputies and Command Officers without health insurance. Insurance. Approval of the resolution will allow the county attorney to file appropriate legal action to mitigate the directives of Teamsters Local two one four. Tim.
Okay, um, I really went back and forth on whether I even wanted to bring this resolution forward, but I've resolved that I, I think is necessary. Number one, it doesn't direct legal action against Teamsters. If we can resolve this without any further action with the Michigan Employment Relation Commission or through the courts, that obviously is the preferred method. Why I'm asking for the authorization is this, and two things that have really come to light. One, today, we have one individual who's impacted by this directly, who has already received a demand letter from the Teamsters Welfare Fund for a little over two thousand dollars in coverage they provided after Local two fourteen canceled their insurance. And this is, was a very serious demand letter. They, they want their refund. Furthermore, the, the individual is scheduled for some medical procedures in a week and presently has no insurance at all. Not an acceptable position. Second reason that I think this is crucial is that we have something called Cobra. You may remember that. There are very specific requirements that we have as an employer under Cobra to A, notify our employees about their coverage status, but B, allow them an opportunity to actually buy into the insurance out of pocket. What would the employee be buying into? Well, in this case, the Teamsters Welfare Fund is saying we will no longer accept these people as members, so we can't even offer letting the, the individuals purchase the insurance that they enjoy. So that leaves us now in a position as an employer, not that we have to, but the right thing to do is to try and get coverage for these people until we get a new contract in place. We've done some considerable work, working with a couple of different sources to provide the insurance. I'm reasonably confident as we sit here today that we're going to have a decent product, perhaps as early as tomorrow. I do have a meeting on Tuesday with representative from another provider that has an awful lot of promise to it. But we nevertheless are having to go through the process of not only getting new insurance, but these employees, when we do finally get them there, we've got to make it retroactive and chances are their out of pocket cost is going to be more than what it was, but the prior coverage that was supposed to run through the end of September. So again, I'm getting very little in terms of cooperation out of either Teamsters two fourteen or the welfare fund to the point that really they're not interested in even discussing the matter. All that being said, I believe they're on the hook. They have, we had a contract with the county. The county did not break that contract. We did not receive notice from the welfare fund that they were discontinuing the contract as our agreement with them states they should or states that they have to do. So I don't, for the next week or so, I don't have a very comfortable feeling for where our offices are literally with no coverage. Ultimately, I, I believe if anything does happen, we probably are going to have to go through, the attorney or the individuals will, through their own attorneys, take on the welfare fund to get the benefits that in fact that we had contracted for. So it's a pretty long-winded way of saying, I hope we don't need to do anything. But I would like the authorization to put the county attorneys into motion if we need to do it.
I would make a motion. We, the resolution being presented second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Serb with support from Commissioner Scott to approve the resolution to authorize legal action against Teamsters Local two one fourteen and the Michigan Conference of Teamsters Welfare Fund. Any discussion on that? I, I talked to you a little bit about this earlier, Tim, just because I, I guess I didn't fully understand it and had some questions about it. I, I guess, and you explained it as far as what would be our benefit as far as going after them legally. I didn't feel like that was necessary. There's going to be coverage. I, I agree they should have coverage right now. But going after them from a legal standpoint, what exactly were we going after and what benefit would it be to us? Our, our duty right now is to just get them covered.
Right. And, and we candidly, we don't have an obligation to do that, but I think ethically, morally, we need to do that. As far as going after the Teamsters, if we are able to get the coverage and the coverage can be made retroactive to when this policy was canceled, I don't see a reason to pursue it any further. I, I just don't because we would have everybody covered and.
But the cost, the cost to even get to that point. I mean, can we do that with just going after the fair labors?
This is just filing a complaint with.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what him and I discuss and that's, at that point in time, that's where this is at right now. We do authority to go forward, but we're not a hundred percent going forward unless we absolutely have to.
Exactly. I, I don't want to spend a dime of attorney monies if we don't have to. And the filing of the unfair labor practice, I mean, that's a, you know, a form is filled out and submitted to the Michigan Employment Relation Commission. I'll take care of that. May run it by the attorneys to make sure all the wording is correct, but it's a pretty self-explanatory form. There likely would be a hearing and, and so on down at Merck. But again, it's just a matter of going down, presenting the facts and then they make a decision whether there was.
Because what's a turnaround on that?
A long time potentially. It could be, we could be a year.
But we may, we may have to contract with another company for six.
We, we will have to, yes.
So we should go after them to recover that fee.
We, we would.
We've already paid them.
Right. We would at least need to recover the fees that the Teamsters already have from the county.
Right. So my question was, is even going after those fees, could that end up costing us more money by going after those fees than getting the fees?
Depends on what they are.
Versus, versus reward. Well, I mean.
Before we jump on it.
Oh, yeah. Agree.
Yeah.
Absolutely agree.
I don't disagree with the, the idea of this, but I, I think the cost could outweigh our.
The benefit.
Turn.
Exactly, exactly. And we'll do that cost benefit analysis before we do anything. I don't foresee a future where the welfare fund is going to say, whoops, our bad, you know, we're reinstating this. I don't foresee a future where the welfare fund is gonna say, what's our bad? You know, we're reinstating this. That's not gonna happen. So my primary goal right now is just to get coverage for these employees and we paid through July, I believe, so there may only be a fraction of even the monthly payment that would be owed, and that's that's where the cost benefit comes in. If it's a matter of, you know, a few hundred dollars, that's one thing. It's not gonna be tens of thousands for sure.
Right, because there's thirty seven thirty seven employees, is that what?
Well, in this case, I think we've got probably a dozen, maybe at most that are impacted. And it's only a partial month as well, so it's not a huge dollar amount.
Was there any research done on this before this action took place?
I was caught totally by surprise. In fact, the the story I read, I had one phone call that said, gosh, one of our deputies went to get a prescription filled, and he was told he didn't have insurance. And that's the first I heard of it poking around, and then I find out, well, a couple of weeks earlier, Teamsters two fourteen canceled the insurance. It's a wow. This is a fine way to find out.
Well, that's what you said, but I mean, as far as when when they were making the decision to possibly change unions.
But that was their action.
That's what I'm saying. Was there any research done on their end? Knowing that this could possibly happen.
This shouldn't have happened because they have a contract with that union through September thirty. That's what this whole unfair labor practice is trying to address is the fact.
There's gotta be
Retaliation.
Or they wouldn't have just did this.
They're not a government.
Okay, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Ron Vaughn. Brad Newbecker. Jenny David. Craig Scott. Mark Serber.
You'll keep us updated on this?
Yes, watch your emails. This could be moving target and very fluid over the next week.
This doesn't require a action on our part. No, I mean to get them signed on to somebody else. Do we need to
Yeah, we'll have to bring you a contract to do it, and that's that's what I need. My challenge is to get that worked out. My goal is to get make whatever we end up doing retroactive to what, July twenty first or whatever this cutoff was, because their employees have had expenses and we need to, you know, try to get some coverage that way. But there would be a contract, but the contract would be retroactive, I guess.
What if it's not retroactive? I I I think these individuals should have some kind of coverage tomorrow. You know, and can can I make, is it out of the out of order to make a a motion to to direct the chairman to sign a contract when available? And that way I don't have to wait two weeks for a meeting.
Well, unfortunately, it's probably gonna take two weeks to work it through the bureaucracy at the carrier to make all this happen, but We couldn't, we couldn't sign up with the plan that we have right now for the non-union and the steelworker group. It's a Blue Cross plan. We stand a pretty good chance of taking them off that plan and putting them on another plan after the contract is negotiated. But I'm trying to do is avoid that intermediate step. And and whatever we end up with out of this action is what we end up with moving forward when the new contract is in place. That's the hope. Understand what you're saying, but unfortunately, you know, it's we have an agency and Blue Cross, and I'm trying to work through those bureaucracies too to get this all set up. Just doesn't happen really quick. That's why the retroactive component is so important to me as I'm talking to them, and I keep saying, I need this retroactive to July.
Yeah, because you had said at our last committee of the whole that even Deepold, that's what you're referring to, had agreed to sign on these individuals until this could be worked out.
And and would do a retro as well. Make a retroactive, I don't know what they call it, but just their contract cover whatever their needs were up to the date this was canceled.
We don't want to pursue that.
The other carrier I'm talking to, it's a better product and it costs less. And it's one that hopefully we'll be bargaining to get to anyway. It's just a matter of, you know, the whipsaw effect. Okay, you've got this carrier, and now you're gonna have this carrier. All right, so there's gonna be some of that that's going on. I could certainly, if it's the wish of the board, yeah. Well, we already know the process with Deepold. We would get what the employees have them fill out the paperwork and get that in. You know, maybe that's a preferred way. I don't know what you're hearing at the Department Sheriff about the urgency, other than the one who's got the scheduled procedures next week.
It's very urgent because you just never know.
You never know.
That's that's what's got me so nervous about this.
I mean, you know, one thing is to be injured or something that worked, that's gone, but the wife gets hurt, you know, they're not covered by com. Sickness, yeah.
It's it's a bad deal.
That drug, that prescription. Everybody's going to the drugstore one time or another, get that reoccurring prescription. I have to.
Not everybody.
Okay, well, I'm on drugs. I can't.
I I guess. What is what is what is your recommendations?
Talking out loud, we have a contract with Deepold already for health insurance, so you wouldn't have to act as a board if we got that paperwork going. All right, maybe there's some inconvenience about having to switch again later if we have to, but maybe it's better to get them just insured like now.
Yeah, I I agree.
That's where I'm at.
I was looking for an email. I thought, and maybe I misunderstood you, at the meeting you were gonna send it out Friday. You were in conversation, and and again, maybe I missed it, but I didn't see.
Conversation against again this afternoon, and while they're very positive about being able to do this, they're not ready with anything for us to sign off on. And yeah, again, thinking out loud, probably the deep old option is probably the best.
This is the question I got. If we if we ever go with them, I want Teamsters pay for it later, you know.
Right.
And that's why I'm saying we go after them for whatever cost it costs us. If I gotta go down the street to get insurance with these people to be insured, then I I want them to pay for it later, but we gotta pay for it now. We gotta cut it back right now and bam, get some insurance.
I still say they must have had some
We can't wait.
Little grounds to do
We can't wait two more days. This has been too long already.
They 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 believe they do, but we'll we'll find out.
Do we need a motion to do this?
You already have a contract with Deepold, sorry.
Do it, do it.
Thank you.
Okay, item G, resolution to accept fiscal year twenty twenty one capital formula grant. Where am I here? Resolution, okay. This resolution is sponsored by the Transit Director to accept sixty eight thousand five hundred dollars from the Michigan Department of Transportation Formula Grant Program for purchase of a portable bush wash system. Replacement of four overhead garage doors and commercial openers, replacement of four commercial entry doors and keypad openers, and replacement of commercial carpet in the transit facility. Tim, do you want to explain?
This is one of the various silos of public transportation funding that the state administers actually comes from the federal government each year, and both this resolution and the one that follows are the result of grant applications that Ray filled out some time ago. In fact, the the next resolution, it was, it's at least eight months ago when the material was submitted. The state has, for whatever reason, taken until now to release the monies and given the counties or any of the recipients up until about next Friday to sign off on it, so that's why it was so urgent to get them on the agenda tonight and get them approved.
I would just go ahead and if you look in the description of in the invoice, it's brush. A portable brush brush system, so if you just change, put some Rs in the resolution. More than just
I make a motion to uh to I'll make a motion. Was there support on that?
I'll support it. With the correct spelling of the
We have a motion with support to approve the resolution to accept fiscal year twenty twenty capital formula grant. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Brad Newbecker. Jenny David. Craig Scott. Mark Serber. Ron Vaughn.
Resolution carries. Item seven H, resolution to accept fiscal year twenty twenty bus and bus facilities competitive grant. This resolution is sponsored by the Transit Director to accept four hundred and seven thousand dollars from the Michigan Department of Transportation Bus and Bus Facilities Competitive Program for Building Construction for Inside Bus Parking Asphalt Replacement, Security Gate and Fencing, Inside and Outside Security Cameras, and Replacement of an In Ground Hoist. Tim.
Same same as before, this is a program that Brad applied for actually last year. And the state is just now releasing the funds, and they have a deadline for acceptance of next Friday.
So there's gonna be some some renovations.
This is this is good. You're talking about using other money for the
Motion to adapt resolutions presented. Second, now you can talk.
We have a motion from Commissioner Serber with support from Commissioner Vaughn to for the resolution to accept fiscal year twenty twenty bus and bus facilities competitive grant. Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Jenny David. Craig Scott. Mark Serber. Brad Newbecker.
Resolution carries. Item seven I, claims. I I'm confused by this. Is it seventy one thousand eight hundred and forty eight dollars and thirty one cents, or is it seventy three thousand six hundred and seventy one dollars and seventy four cents?
Seventy three sixty one, or I think seventy three sixty.
I get two different numbers here. Which one is it?
It's highlighted, isn't it?
No, that that's the prepaid line.
But that's the total.
Seventy three, is that correct?
Six seventy one seventy four.
In a total of seventy three thousand six hundred and seventy one dollars and seventy four cents. Of you that did claims?
I reviewed claims and I would make a motion that we paid the bills in the moment of seventy three thousand six hundred and seventy one dollars and seventy four cents. And I also reviewed them, and I will second that.
Any insight on the claims this month, guys?
Nothing surprising.
Appropriations was are the audit.
Right, yeah, the the internal controls. I think out of the road patrol mileage show, you had the best carriers. Yeah, I think that was on there.
Sixty nine hundred.
More on the treasures of, so that was part of the internal controls, internal controls too.
Any further discussion? The motion from Commissioner Scott with approval of Commissioner Vaughn to approve claims. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Craig Scott. Mark Serber. Ron Vaughn. Brad Newbecker. Jenny David.
Item eight, unfinished business fiscal year twenty twenty two budget. I will provide an update on the fiscal year twenty twenty two budget. That would be you.
Yeah, well, as you know by now, I'd hope to have that in your hands, but I've been a little sidetracked here this week. You will have it if I've got to work over the weekend to get it, but you will have it so that when we get to the committee of the whole, I want to go start going over it in detail with you. I don't think the budget itself, when it is finally in front of you, is gonna present you with any surprises. And it's fairly routine, but I think the thing that we really want to start to talk about and we will next Thursday are those mileage rates that we've mentioned in the past, and we'll be prepared then start narrowing down just exactly what proposals would be, how that would affect the rates. Couple of other resolutions that we'll be dealing with, just like we did last year, to mention the fees resolution earlier tonight. We'll also have the annual resolution for the elected department heads as well to start talking about. So I just apologize. I really wanted this to be in your hands before tonight, but it just isn't. That's it.
So we'll see it next week.
You'll you'll see it before your meeting for sure.
Uh, item nine, administrators report.
I think I've probably talked enough tonight. You know what I'm about to.
Anything else? Item ten, elected officials and department head reports. Sheriff?
I just got a couple of things.
Can you come up so everybody can hear you, please?
The fractional academy, I ended up sending two instead of the three. There's a medical issue that got them back, so I got two down there. And I apologize for not getting my text messages out to you folks, but there's two in the academy right now.
So they started? They started this week?
Started Monday, yes, and they started P T yesterday, and they're hurting.
So that must be new because I signed, didn't I sign last week all three? Okay, okay.
So there's only two. Another thing that I have to bring up is the fair. The fair went really well. And Kip was a big hit out there. The kids love him. Great, great response. We didn't have any altercations. We had a couple reported of a couple fights. But by the time we got down and resolved it solved, there was nobody around, so there was no big issues, so other than a lot of cell phones that were lost. But the fair went real well. Thank you.
Brett Gildner, Oklahoma County Clerk. I just got back from a four-day Michigan Association of County Clerks training. Extremely informative. Today, we had our reapportionment committee meeting, myself, treasurer, prosecutor, and the Democratic Chair. So the redistricting of your districts is happening now. Our next meeting is September seventeenth at two P M, and that'll be open to public. If any of you guys want to come and give your opinions on anything, the the census data was unofficially released. So we actually have until October twelfth to make make and submit the final maps, if anything's gonna change. But our goal is to have them done and completed by September thirtieth, so the Friday, the seventeenth at two P M in here, if you guys would like to give input. Other than that, I think we're moving along in our training and I'm just about ready to give up court completely to all the girls, and so I can fully do my job. So things are good.
Thank you. Any certain elected, any elected officials on the phone?
The train commissioners here.
Any elected officials on the phone?
Do you have a question for me, Craig?
I'm gonna win, sir. I'm gonna have you speak when this individual, if you, I'm sure he's gonna have questions for you. Is that okay? Is there something else you wanted to add?
I was just responding to Craig Scott.
Well, I wanted to give you the opportunity.
Okay. Matters from the floor. Is there any matters from the floor? Item twelve, motions for adoptions. Commissioners may offer other motions not otherwise taken up on as part of the agenda. Item thirteen, committee report. Commissioners are offered this opportunity to report on activities of committees to which they are assigned, and in activities or other municipalities they represent. Commissioner Scott.
Yep, I I attended the community and a airport board meeting last week. We had Mary Bickle from the E D C there, and we talked to her about the opportunities the airport gives for businesses. We had put out proposal RFPs, I guess, or bid it is for farming operations out on our on our clear-cut areas. We we have, we're any entering a contract to Gallagher Farms to clear and farm clear-cut property. We talked about a plow truck to a replacement. All in all, pretty good meeting. I went to the road commission meeting and they had a number of different things. Their 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 budget their budget is in draft, their final budget is in draft form right now, and they're close to having it done. A couple of contracts with the county state trunk line. And they talked about their refund from the Michigan County Road Commission South Insurance Fund, their liability insurance. They normally get A refund every year. This year, the refund was a hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars. Their premium was a hundred and three thousand dollars. So I thought that was pretty good to make seventy one thousand dollars more than you paid in.
Were they expecting that? Is that?
Uh, well, I got kind of a ten-year thing and they, the refund has never exceeded a hundred thousand, but. Um, every year there is uh, the the pool is made up of all the road commissions. And there was fifteen million dollars distributed out to all the different counties.
Oh, wow.
Um, but they said in the letter that I have here, uh, they said that that is not um. It is not a given. No member is automatically entitled to a refund, but it's. How it's, how it's put out and what they're um. What their uh, uh. Losses were, so, yeah, that was pretty good, pretty good meeting. That's all I have for this meeting.
Commissioner Serbik.
I attended EMS. They were awarded a federal grant. Of a hundred and twenty one thousand four hundred and sixty one dollars, which couldn't come at a better time for them because. The heart rate monitors that they use in the ambulance right now were purchased. I think they said it was either two thousand seven or two thousand eight. And the company is no longer supporting that model. That's just about gonna equal. For new ones, they wanted that federal grant. So thank goodness they covered them. Um, District Health Department. Nothing really earth shattering, other than the fact that as of right now, they are deferring to. School superintendents, their masking requirements, so one school could be no mask. Another one, and I know some of them are saying you gotta have it on the buses, but not in the classroom. Um, so anyway, at this point in time, she's deferring to, they're highly recommending, strongly recommending, but. She's not mandating any um, rules in the schools at this time, so and I had met with the. We do this via Zoom, the Ogumaw County Human Services Coordination Council, which includes two-on-one. Various organizations that are trying to take and and provide human service. To county residents, so. Go ahead, come on.
I mean, that's very refreshing to hear that the health department is gonna give some autonomy back to these schools and to parents.
She's not mandated. Like I said, she was just saying, you know, same thing that, you know, the federal government's saying and and at the state level.
They're recommending.
Highly recommending it, but not requiring.
So again, giving some autonomy back to.
Yes.
That's refreshing.
And I I I got something uh, in an email today from Bridge, Michigan Bridge, which is a news organization and they. Put out a list of known. If you can go down through it and school district and tell you whether it's required in the classroom, what the age groups are. And most of this area of Michigan that was on there that were known were just requiring it on buses only and not in the, once in the classroom. But requiring it on the buses. I don't know what um, I think West Branch was like. I don't, I don't remember. I'm not gonna say it because I don't remember what West Branchville City was doing, but that was most of them were just buses only, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Vaughn.
I was out of town for District Health and that's the only meeting that we had. I'm good.
Commissioner Newbecker.
I had an airport with Craig. Uh, he covered that and then I also had Bus Branch Township D D A. Um, he reviewed the um, infrastructure project on M fifty five pathway and uh, progress on that. Um, made some adjustments to that budget. Um, was a whole lot going on with the RV part as far as a progress update. Um, finalized their calendar for the rest of the year and then uh. We went over uh. The E D C, um, supporting the E D C, Sue Delahanny was there. Um, we accepted a membership to the Michigan Downtown Association and uh. All right, I think that was it, yeah.
So you guys are supporting the E D C?
Yeah.
How much money are you giving?
I believe it was five or six thousand dollars.
Oh, good, thank you. Um, I don't have anything. I was pretty active at the fair. Uh, so that was a busy week there. Um, they did have an E D C meeting, but unfortunately I wasn't able to attend because it was uh, uh, during the fair. So the fair seemed to go off quite well. Um, I worked the gate a couple nights. Uh, Wednesday night was absolutely crazy. It was vehicle after vehicle for hours. Um, it's very refreshing to to see, so I I do believe that that will help them from a financial standpoint. Um, I will keep you informed at the follow-up meeting as far as how they came out. Out there financially, um. I wanted to ask you all, uh, the next committee of the whole meeting, can we, since we are gonna have some discussion, um, can we bump that up? Does anybody mind if we bump that up to eight o'clock? Does anybody have any objections?
I'll be on Zoom if I can make.
Commissioner Newbecker, do you have any objections to that?
I haven't even thought about it yet.
Commissioner Serbik.
Question mark. I don't know.
Can you? I mean, it's.
I I I will tend to always say no problem.
Commissioner Scott. Um, the other thing I had, I just was looking at those, the one of Connor, where are we at with those plaques? I was looking at those while Commissioner Scott was talking and and I know we discussed and.
Oh, you weren't paying attention either.
Um, it it is obviously been a lower priority uh, based on what's on my plate, but I do have the file on it that we had talked about. Advertising for nominees and starting that process, so.
Well, I just know we had just talked about having an outdoor ceremony and then we're closing in on the time, so I definitely. Was Brenda taking care of that? Do you recall that? Brenda was doing some, I think Wadonna was doing some.
Mm-hmm.
Donna came in and gave it to us, she told us that one.
Just wanna make sure that this isn't forgotten.
They, I'm not sure what the, what they.
Can we look into that? I know that's not high priority. I'm not denying that, but we're running out of good days.
Yes.
I, do you want, do you want me to get with them? And get an update?
I would be happy to let you do that, yes.
That's fine. Because I know they're somewhere. I just don't know where they're at with it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I also seen the construction. That's like bare bones over there. Cross the street, holy.
They gunned it.
Yeah, yeah. That was the plan.
Okay, anyways, item fourteen, uh, general public comment. This is the second of two opportunities for public comment. On December tenth, twenty twenty, the Board of Commissioners approved Resolution twenty to seventy seven to adapt rules of procedure. That include a structure for public comment. This public comment period is reserved for the public. Statements on any matter or issue that is relevant or germane to county government. Persons who wish to address the board are required to comply with the following. One, state your name for the record. Two, speak only to the chairperson. Three, stand behind the podium when speaking. Four, limit comments to three minutes or fewer. Five, follow the direction of the chairperson when speaking. Board rules do not impose restrictions on subject manner. However, failure to follow the direction of the chairperson will result in not being able to talk. Or being removed from the meeting. The board chairperson reserves the right to sound the gavel when the audience applauds or drives a speaker on behalf of the board of commissioners. We thank you in advance for your compliance with these rules. Sir, come on up.
I want to do is get my question, what's going on?
Come on up, yep. Your name?
Olin.
Hi.
Olin.
Olin.
Low spell it.
Oiling.
Oh. Okay.
I was out of order, missed full apologies.
No, that's okay.
Uh, senior. Uh, denial or. Wanted to get out of the, or not not join rather than Red River, all that range. Uh, I tried calling Mike, never got a call back. Well, I did get a call back, I didn't call him though. Then he had a meeting. I asked if he would intervene or bring us up to date on what's going on. Are we participating in the meeting? Up down the standardish and what's been coming to that, what we know of it.
Mike, come on up. You talk, pardon me? Absolutely.
So am I addressing you or him?
Uh, you're addressing.
I can just talk.
You're addressing. You're addressing all of us because I think we've already received some questions um, over the last week.
So what is your specific question, I guess? Well, I do, I've seen the board is not wanting to join in on their side. Okay, so I guess pardon, perhaps we talked in the hallway after the meeting, the history of how it came about if whoever here today. Come, no, we don't want to do it. Well, as I told you the other day, um. This is an action that's been. Uh, precipitated by Arnett County. What he wants to do is get us to sharing the cost of. Maintenance on the rifle river in his county. So, um, there is a, there is a statute that allows him to do that if. The drain commissioners and the counties involved agree to it. There was a a law passed in two thousand seventeen allowing. A county to be added to a drainage district, so basically. Since I talked to you last, I've been doing some more research on this and I found out that actually. The only part of this drainage district that's gonna be affected is the, is the, the, is the, the outlet to rifle river. Eight thousand feet up the river, so uh, that's where all the maintenance is gonna take place. And um, so I I asked Mike Gregg and I said, so essentially. We, we can't even do any work in Ogumaw County on the rifle river, but he just wants to help us to pay for Arnett County. Based on the fact that we contribute water to it. He said, yes, that's exactly right. So that's what it boils down to. We contribute water, that's their argument. That's always the argument. That's the criteria they use. We contribute water to the rifle river, therefore we are responsible for maintaining that watershed. So, and it's gonna be a vote of uh. I've been, I've been replaced because I have landed in the district, so I'm not eligible to vote. I've been replaced by. Terry Walters from Gladwin County, which is the procedure they use. I would, he was nominated or he was appointed by Scott Williams. And that's typically the way it's done. It's a drain commissioner from a county contiguous to to yours. So he has a vote, Arnett County has a vote. And if if they one votes yes, one votes no, then Mike Gregg from the Department of Agriculture will cast the tiebreaker. So I'm not sure how that's gonna go, but uh, of course, as I said before, my. My main problem with this is that every year we have to update that assessment rule. It's gonna cost the county a lot of money. Because there could be as many as ten thousand parcels in this assessment district and it's gonna cost the county. Quite a bit of money to do that because I don't have an office and a staff and a computer and software, so I have a uh, outside firm do that for me. So. So it's a really uh. Drain laws are based on your benefits that you receive. That's what it all boils down to and their their contention is that our benefit is the fact that we donate water, so. But realistically, I don't think it's gonna change any of us, our lives in the least, but. Uh, it all boils down to the vote, so and of course, like any other decision, it's appealable. If the townships in the county don't agree with their decision, we can appeal that. It'd be a circuit court deal. Um, and that's happened before in the Whitney drain. We voted. Two to one against going ahead with that and Whitney Township appealed that to Circuit Court and Circuit Court Judge Baumgartner overruled us. So that's why we had to go ahead with that. So it can be, there are challenges that you can do. It's not a totally done deal. So, but it'd be a lot easier, we can nip it in the bud. Next Monday. I'm not sure how it's gonna go. I'm kinda think how I think it might go, but I'm not positive, so.
And that's an open meeting that the public can attend, correct?
That's correct. They will hand out uh, the way Mike Greg. He he does a lot of these. I've been in with him before. You know, he'll hand out speaker cards. You'll turn them in. You'll have a stack come in front of them. He he'll say, okay, Ms. David, you're next. Mister uh, Newbecker, you're after him and after him is Mister Vaughn. So that's, you have a speaker card, you walk up and they give you X amount of time to speak. When you're done, the next person comes up. And I anticipate a big crowd because somebody, I'm not sure in this county, I think it's been Tim, he's been stirring up a lot of uh, problems here. I talked to Mike Gregg today and he says I, when I called him, he kinda, he kinda sighed a little bit. I said, why are you sighing? He says, it's been a long day, so he's been getting a lot of emails. He said, I've gotten a resolution from every township in the county of Ogumaw. From the city of West Branch, from the city of Rose City, Rose. I said, well.
And now, the county commissioners.
Well, yeah.
Soon get one.
Yeah, so.
You said it, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead. You, you said you had made the statement that it wasn't going to affect any of us in a negative fashion. It's not going to if this is denied. But if this is not denied, it will cost us.
Did I say I may have misspoke?
Uh, it will cost every resident in Ogumaw County money, correct?
Not every resident, just every resident in the watershed.
Two thirds of the county.
Okay, so I under misunderstood.
Right.
Okay.
If you're not in the watershed, there's actually another hearing called a boundary hearing where you can come to the hearing. And you complete your case that you're not even in the rifle river. And some people are on the edge. That's all done by a satellite called LiDAR and they say it's accurate to within one or two feet, so it's fairly accurate. But that, that map that you got, that you probably saw in that letter is is pretty um. Pretty uh, inclusive. And the 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 thinking is they, they, they always over notice versus under notice. Because if they don't notice you, they can include you in the district, but if they, if they notice you and you're not supposed to be in the district, they can always take you out. So it's easier to remove them and just to add, they can add you later on if they don't notice you. So they always over notice. So there's some people on the perimeters probably that aren't even in the district, but they still got noticed. So, and a lot of people, I got a stack of envelopes, I got the second stack of, they go by the. They take the address off the tax roll, wherever your taxes are set, that's the, that's the address they send it to. A lot of people, I don't know, for some reason they don't get it, it's returned, but uh, that's all they're obligated to do. And this is done by a mailing service because there's like fifteen thousand parcels, so they hired a mailing service to do this. And your next question is probably gonna be. If, if this doesn't happen, who pays the preliminary costs for all the, because they probably got thousands and thousands in legal fees. All the mailings and notices and all that sort of thing. That'll all be paid for by Arnett County out of there.
If, so if this gets denied, they have to pay for.
That's correct. Because there's no, there's no drainage district to bill it to, so. So Arnett County will pay it all. So.
Why is this being brought up now?
Well, I mean, why is, why is he, well, because he's new and he's been after the. After the big storm in May last year, they had a lot of problems down there and a lot of people were complaining to him and and somebody put a bug in his. But to uh, you know, told him, you know, this is something you can do because it was just in two thousand seventeen, so he said, well, that's a good idea, so. Uh, and I got a feeling, I know who that is, I'm not sure, but I've got a feeling I know who, who inspired him to do this, so. And probably the next, after this one. The the next one's probably gonna be the Odd Gray River, so. I wouldn't be a bit surprised if he does happen next, so. Um, but with the Odd Gray River, we have two, two drain commissioners are probably against it, only one for it, so that might be a little simpler.
So are you encouraging Ogumaw residents to attend this meeting next week?
Well, it might be a super spreader, but other than that, I think. I I encourage.
Wear your mask.
Yeah. Shut up, Craig.
Thank you.
I hear that a lot.
So they have seating for five hundred. I I really, I've been to quite a few of these hearings and. To me, they're a lot of fun, but some people don't really care for them, but uh, I think I wouldn't be surprised if it's standing room only, frankly, so.
So again, you are encouraging residents.
Yes.
Okay, I don't think.
If not announced, it'll be entertaining.
And it's where?
It's uh. It's, I can't remember, it's a community center right behind the.
I have a letter, I just want to hear him say it.
Right behind the courthouse and.
I got a letter in the mail.
Okay, I I personally have never been there, but Larry said it's right, you're right behind the courthouse, so it's apparently, it must be a big building, so. And I've never been there, so is there an address on that?
Is there any commissioners that plan on attending?
No, I wasn't.
Craig's going.
No, the Arnett, Arnett Community Center, five eighty-three East Cedar Street, Standish.
He said it's right behind the courthouse. You go down. You're going with me, I'm taking you up, Craig.
So I can't attend that if it's.
So uh, we're gonna do breakfast, then we'll go down there.
What time is it?
Ten thirty in the morning.
And I, and I could talk to you after if you got. I just find you interested in line stops at Osco that. Well, that's the watershed. That's the rifle river watershed, so it's not the. And it might even go up in, what's the county straight and arc of like, got clear like, is that Alcona County or?
It's Osco.
Osco. And it's possible it could go up into there a little ways too, who knows?
I don't know. Go to Anaros, kind of depends upon.
So. Yeah, well, that's just because they didn't want to fight two counties at one time, probably, because they knew.
No, you were talking about all great. Is that the next? No, you were talking about Ogre now. So that's not the next one you were talking about. The next county.
What's that?
I don't, nothing.
No, the Ogre River.
That'll be another issue.
Right.
That could be, that could be next.
But the next county you were talking about, sir, was, what's the next county?
Yeah. And if they include, even if there was any in the watershed up there, that, then their drain commissioner would have to be on the panel. That would be three votes instead of two. So and, uh, I don't know that for a fact. I'm just.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Greg, where will you be at Monday morning?
Be with me. We've got negotiations.
Oh, okay.
Just checked.
Yeah, we do.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment?
Let's see.
Come on up.
Hi, Pauline Johnson, Clarking Township. I've been here for a while. What's going on? I haven't heard or seen anything going on at K C C. So are we blowing it off? What's going on with it? Um, have you spoken to Brandon VanderWaal's office?
I believe there was a commissioner that had a conversation with Brandon. Was it?
I talked, I talked to, this is Brandon at Edwards Township about three months ago. So she said she was looking into it. I says, are you, are you sure? I asked her, you're, you're in your last term. You're laying duck. Is this really gonna happen? And she assured me it would, that she would look into it. That's the best I can tell you.
Doesn't return phone calls.
I know.
Called her too.
Have we sent the invites out that we were going to send? Okay, so that is, unfortunately, I, I'm not making excuses by any means. We're, we're hearing you.
I'm just getting the impression that we're just ignoring this.
We're not, but we're, we've been through negotiations and a lot going on right now. We're, we're on the tail end of that. So I do believe within the next uh, two to three months, things are going to significantly improve. So no, that has not been forgotten. We will continue to put that on the committee of the whole agenda.
And I did put a call yesterday into VanderWaal's office. So I'm waiting for a call back from them as well.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Lieutenant, it's Oklahoma County. I just want to, uh, thank you and, uh, commend you for approving the resolution to not add Oklahoma County to the, uh, Red River Drainage District. Uh, we all know we don't need more taxes that we're not getting a service for. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any public comment on the phone? Any public comment on the phone? Public comment?
Right, I'll make a motion that was going to close session to discuss bargaining, uh, right, right after a quick break.
Did I miss? I did miss that. Um.
I'll support the motion.
Gosh, I did. We have a motion with support to go into close session to discuss collective bargaining agreement negotiations. I'm just so the public is aware, they'll be know for their business. Once we come out of this. So can we get a real call hold on that? Mark Sibek.
Yes.
Okay.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker. Jenny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
We're going to close session at seven twenty three.
Can we?
I need a slight break.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Couple of minutes.
This is not gonna take long.
I totally missed that.
Don't live my life.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, right.
You got a copy of Brian?
No, I'm good.
Are you okay?
Yeah. Make sure I don't trip over something. You're embarrassing myself on a TV.
You're right. We better not be. I don't think we're on there anymore, are we?
If you'd be able to see it, it's bad enough.
Motion to come into open.
Together, we combined it.
All right.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven.
I'd like to make one, one note that since I got a, a public asked me a question on, be a can we have the O R V ordinance on the county meeting next week?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Has, has them went out to, have them went out to the, uh, townships, those letters?
I haven't done anything else.
Okay, okay. Maybe Brett can do that letter too. Oh, I'm sorry.
See you, Brett.